I would like to welcome everyone to the annual reorganization meeting held this evening on January 5th, 2022 at 5:00 PM. We've had a couple of technical difficulties. We are going to work through it. I think we have resolved most of those issues. Please remain on mute as you proceed through this evening's event. At this time, I am your temporary chairperson, Mr. Afonso Cuyano Superintendent. Please rise and join me in the flax loop. You may unmute yourself at this time, board members, to join me. I pledge allegiance. Thank you. Reading of the Sunshine Statement. In compliance with the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law, commonly Ms. Leary, can you go unmute? Okay, thank you. We will be swearing new and returning board members tonight. Inez Acosta, Renee Fabry, and Alex Silva. At this time, I would like to turn the proceedings over to Mr. DeSanto, so he can explain the process and conduct the swearing-in ceremony.
Thank you. At this time, we would like to call, one at a time, in alphabetical order, the three recently elected board members. Ms. Acosta? Would you raise your right hand, please? I state your name. You're on mute.
Sorry about that.
Okay. I state your name.
I, Inez Acosta.
Do solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
And that I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And to the government.
And to the government.
Established in the United States.
Established in the United States.
And this state.
And this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I state your name.
I, Inez Acosta.
Solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I possess.
That I possess.
The qualifications prescribed by law.
The qualifications prescribed by law.
For the office of member of the Board of Education.
For the office of member of the Board of Education.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Justly.
Justly.
And impartially perform.
And impartially perform.
All of the duties.
All of the duties.
Of that office.
Of that office.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Ms. Fabry? Please raise your right hand. We need to have you off mute.
Bob, I believe she is not able to get back into the meeting. Dawn has to let her in.
Okay.
I don't see her in the waiting room.
Well, I could swear in Alex while we're waiting. Okay, Alex, take yourself off of mute. Thank you. I state your name.
I, Alex Silva.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And I will bear true faith.
And I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And to the government.
And to the government.
Established in the United States.
Established in the United States.
And this state.
And this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I, Alex Silva.
I, Alex Silva.
Solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I possess.
That I possess.
The qualifications prescribed by law.
The qualifications prescribed by law.
For the office of.
For the office of.
Member of the Board of Education.
Member of the Board of Education.
And that I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
Justly.
Justly.
And impartially perform.
And impartially perform.
All of the duties of that office.
All of the duties of that office.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Bob or Dawn? I'm in communication with Renee. She cannot reenter the meeting. And she's having some kind of technical difficulty. Can we see if we can help her somehow? She exited, she completely went out and went back to the click, to the email and clicked on the link and tried to get into the waiting room. Nothing's happening. And I thought this was all ironed out before because obviously she's new to the, you know, technology that we use and how we use it, but.
She was able to join. She was already on with us, so I'm not sure why it's not letting her back in. Dawn, are you able to remove her as a participant?
I can.
It says non. Non-video participant. If you click on her name, it says non.
She needs to be moved over. Okay, hold up.
I can remove her. But I just.
Yeah, remove her, she said.
Okay.
You might not be able to get back in. You remove her.
If you take her out, she won't come back in.
Yeah.
Okay, so what about putting her in the waiting room and then try to let her back in? Okay. All right, so let's see if we can get her back in.
Let me, let me try it. Let me do it.
I just clicked on admin. I just admitted. It still says joining.
Worst-case scenario, can she join the meeting under, with her cellphone? Anybody? Am I muted? No. Dawn, can you hear me?
She should be able to do that. She should be able to use the same link using her cellphone and.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
There. Yeah, because it's, it's stuck on her side for whatever reason. She's not.
It's just saying, "Joining," and nothing's happening. I did click "Admit," so I don't know. That's how I let her in the first time, so I'm not sure what's going on.
A question for Gia, maybe. Is, does the public have access to it? Because it's not on YouTube. They can't get it on the call. And if they don't have access, then we're going to violate the sunshine law.
I didn't, I have no control over the stream or the record, or the phone portion. Ms. Leary did all of that. I know she's recording it, so it will be uploaded regardless after the meeting. I'm just not sure if we can get the stream going again.
You want me to try to get it going again, Gia?
Yeah, if you could. As long as it's recording, we're good, but I, I can't physically start anything. I, I'm just a participant in the meeting, so I can't do it myself.
Okay, I can try live streaming. I have to turn the background noise because all the other YouTube things started coming in to play and. All right. Okay. There she is.
Hey. Okay.
She's still connecting.
Hello, everyone.
Hi, sorry about that. We don't know what happened to you.
Well, I hope this isn't what the year is going to look like. Sorry about that, everybody.
All right, are you ready to be sworn in?
Well, I'm sweating, but yes, I'm ready to be sworn in.
Okay. Please raise your right hand. Is your son with you?
Yes.
All right. And have your left hand on the Bible? Is that what you're doing?
Yes.
Okay. All right. I, Renee Fabry.
I, Renee Fabry.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
And that I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And to the government.
And to the government.
Established in the United States.
Established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I, Renee Fabry.
I, Renee Fabry.
Solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I possess.
That I possess.
The qualifications.
The qualifications.
Prescribed by law.
Prescribed by law.
For the office of.
For the office of.
Member of the Board of Education.
Member of Board of Education.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Justly.
Justly.
And impartially perform.
And impartially perform.
All of the duties of that office.
All of the duties of that office.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll go to item number four, to our roll call. Mr. DeSanto, would you please explain the nomination and voting process as we proceed?
Well, you want to have roll call first, and then we'll do that.
Absolutely.
This, Ms. Leary, roll call.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Acosta? You're muted, Ms. Acosta.
Present.
Thank you. Ms. Cottisbody? You were just muted. You have to unmute again. Thank you. Ms. Fabry?
Present.
Mr. Fioki?
Here.
Mr. Holmes?
Here.
Ms. Rivera?
Here.
Mrs. Sabrana?
Present.
Mr. Silva?
Here.
Ms. Spinelli?
Here.
Thank you.
Before we continue, Mr. Yano, I want to address the question brought up by Mr. Holmes. I have to admit, I don't know enough about technology to know the answer to this, but is the public gaining access to this meeting? Is it being denied in any way? Can someone help with that answer?
I just livestreamed it again.
I just was told that they can see it on YouTube now.
Right, and I just livestreamed it again and turned off the background noise that we had earlier.
Okay. All right. Mr. Mr. Yano, I'll now explain the process for election of officers. There are a number of methods for election of officers of an organization. Over the years, the Violin Board of Education has implemented the following procedure. The superintendent will open the floor for nomination of the office of president. Any board member may nominate another board member for president. A second is not necessary. More than one person may be nominated. If only one person is nominated, then the superintendent declares the nominations closed and a roll call vote is taken on that nomination. If that person receives five or more votes, then he or she is elected president. If there are more than one, if more than one person is nominated, then a vote is taken on the first person nominated. If that person receives five or more votes, then that person is elected. If not, you proceed to the second person nominated and take a roll call vote. Once the newly elected president is, is declared the winner, then that person assumes the chair and presides over the same process for vice president and presides over the remainder of the meeting. Any questions? Right, Mr. Yano, you may proceed with the nominations.
At this time, I would like to open the floor for any nominations to the, for the election of a president to the Violin Board of Education. Are there any nominations?
Mr. Yano, I nominate Ms. Megan Spinelli for president of the Violin Board of Education.
So noted. Any other nominations? Seeing none here, no more. I believe that's with one nomination, we'll have a roll call.
Ms. Acosta?
Yes.
Mrs. Cottisbody?
Yes.
Ms. Fabry?
Yes.
Mr. Mr. Fioki?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Sabrana?
Yes.
Mr. Silva?
Yes.
Ms. Spinelli?
Yes.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Meg.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
You may now assume the chair and preside over the election of vice president.
Okay, at this time, I open the floor for nominations of vice president.
Madam President?
Mr. Sabrana?
I'd like to nominate Kimberly Cottisbody as vice president.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Any other nominations?
Any other nominations?
Closed.
Ms. Larry?
Ms. Acosta?
Yes.
Mrs. Cottisbody?
Yes.
Ms. Fabry?
Yes.
Mr. Fioki?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
No.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Sabrana?
Yes.
Mr. Silva?
Yes.
Ms. Spinelli?
Yes.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Congratulations, Kim.
At this time, our next agenda item is public com- comment on agenda items only. Limit yourself to three minutes per person.
We have to go back. Yeah, to item number seven, Ms. Spinelli.
Which is public comment on agenda items.
It's on the agenda. It should say motion to suspend.
Number seven is a motion to suspend the bylaw which provides now for five minutes, and the board has passed a motion each meeting to suspend that to make it three. Then, of course, once your personnel policy committee can reconvene, it's probably a better idea to change the bylaw rather than keep making this motion. But for now, we need the motion, Meg.
Okay, we're going to make a motion to sus- to suspend the bylaw to make the public comment three minutes instead of five.
For this meeting only.
This meeting only.
Need a motion and a second.
Motion.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Acosta?
Yes.
Mrs. Cottisbody?
Yes.
Ms. Fabry?
Yes.
Mr. Fioki?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Sabrana?
Yes.
Mr. Silva?
Yes.
Ms. Spinelli?
Yes.
Okay, agenda item number nine, recommendations for approval to the board by the superintendent.
We're going to go back to a public comment, I believe. Correct? Before we do the recommendations, so I must be looking at a different agenda, so some Miss Spinelli, number eight would be public comment on agenda items or any other matter now limited by three minutes as the resolution just passed. So if you would like to take it from there?
Do we have anyone on the line for public comment?
I don't have anyone in the waiting room.
Okay. Then we would move on to our recommendations, correct?
Absolutely.
Yes.
Recommendations for approval by the board by the superintendent.
So we will go into nine A, readoption of the bylaws and policies. Nine B, acceptance of the 2020 annual school election results. Nine C, the revised dates and time and place of monthly board meetings per the list provided and on file with the board secretary. All of the links are active on our website, so you'll be able to see what those dates and times are. That's nine A. Any questions or comments?
None at this time.
Okay, request an approval of nine A, E, and C.
Roll call, Ms. Haley? Ms. Leary?
Motion.
I need a motion, first and second.
So moved.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Acosta?
Yes.
Mrs. Cottisbody?
Yes.
Ms. Fabry?
Yes.
Mr. Fioki?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mrs. Sabrana?
Yes.
Mr. Silva?
Yes.
Ms. Spinelli?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, and at this time, we are going to take our board member remarks. Please limit yourself to five minutes. And I'm going to start how I see you on the screen with my first with Ms. Acosta.
Thank you. I just want to thank everyone for their support. I'm very happy to be back on the school board. I'm looking forward to working very hard. I know we're facing many challenges right now, but I have faith that with the resilience of our community, our central administration, teachers, as well as students and parents, we, we will have a successful remainder of the school year. So thank you all. Ms. Spinelli and Ms. Cottisbody, I congratulate you on your office, and I'm sure you're going to do a great job. Thank you.
Mr. Rivera?
Good evening, everyone. I want to congratulate once again Ms. Acosta and Mr. Silva on being reelected. Ms. Fabry, welcome. I look forward to working with you. I look forward to working with the entire board and our superintendent to continue to have as successful school year. I can't wait to get back at it so we can keep on working. Thank you. Good night.
Mr. Fioki?
Good evening. Just want to congratulate and welcome back Ms. Acosta and Mr. Silva. I'd also like to welcome Ms. Fabry to the team. Looking forward to a very productive year. Thank you and good night.
Thank you. Mr. Silva?
Yes, good evening, everyone. I'd like to congratulate and welcome back Inez Acosta to the school board. And our newly-elected school board member, Ms. Fabry, welcome, and I am looking forward to working with you. Additionally, I personally would like to thank all the voters who took the time out to come out and support me during this election process. Like to thank you very much. Once again, I'm very humbled and grateful for the support shown to me during this election process. As stated before, when I was previously elected, I will continue to be a strong advocate for open communications transparency and accountability. I believe everyone has a voice, and your voice should be heard. As a reelected board member to the Violin School Board, I promise to continue doing my best and to continue to be a voice of the people. My door will always be open and inclusive, and I will always listen and will continue to support our students. Thank you to my family and everyone who supported me in my candidacy and who voted for me. And I also would like to congratulate Ms. Spinelli and Ms. Cottisbody. I am looking forward to working with you guys and continue doing all the work we've been doing. Thank you.
Okay, up next, Ms. Fabry.
Good evening. Thank you for your patience earlier with my technical difficulties. I am so humbled and honored to be here tonight. I just want to give a special thank you to the community for allowing me the opportunity to take this seat. I'm really committed to working hard for our children. To my fellow board members, I thank you so much for your warm welcome. Ms. Spinelli, Ms. Cottisbody, congratulations on your new positions. Ms. Acosta, Mr. Silva, welcome back. Mr. Yano and all of central administration, I am grateful to be working beside you. You're experts in your field, and I cannot wait to learn from all of you. To my family and my friends, thank you for your consistent support and encouragement. A special thank you to my biggest supporter, and quite frankly, a really good little campaign manager, my son. I just want to say Happy New Year. Have a safe and Happy New Year, and I'm looking forward to getting to work. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. Sabrana?
Good evening, everyone. Congratulations to Ms. Acosta and Mr. Silva. Welcome back. I look forward to working with you again. Very impressed by how hard you've worked on the committees we've been on together. And I know that we have much to do, and I'm looking forward to your help in getting things done this year. Ms. Fabry, welcome. I was very impressed by how hard you worked and how much time you put into learning about the school board during your campaign. You did, you were there for months and months and months, listening and watching and asking questions, which really impressed me very much. And I'm sure that we're going to be very proud of the work that you do. Meg, congratulations, Madam President. Looking forward to working with you and doing everything I can to give you the benefit of my 27 years hanging around the place. And also Ms. Cottisbody, a colleague and a friend for a long time. I'm sure that you're going to help Ms. Spinelli be as effective a leader as she can possibly be. Um, folks, we have a lot of work to do. We got to hit the ground running. We don't have much time to fool around. The very first thing is the COVID situation. I'm not really happy about a few things that have happened already that we really did much, not, not have much input into, and I look forward to hearing more about that next week at our, at our regular meeting. Beyond that, there's many other issues that we have to deal with, and I hope that we can find a way to reach a consensus together to be effective as a team and do what's right for the kids and their families and the staff and also the taxpayers that support us. Thank you very much.
Mr. Holmes?
Echo the sentiments of my.
Echo the sentiments of my fellow board members. I'm glad to have Mr. Silva and Ms. Acosta back. It's been great working with you for the past few years, and I look forward to continuing that work together. Ms. Fabry, you've been coming to board meetings, learning, uh, anytime you need anything, just a phone call away. Glad to have you, uh, aboard. Uh, Happy New Year. Looking forward to a great year with the Violent Board of Education. Have a great night.
Thank you. Ms. Cottisbody.
Ms. Cottisbody, you need to unmute yourself.
Here you go.
There we go. Okay. Um, I would just like to congratulate, um, Mr. Silva and, uh, Ms. Acosta for, 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 you know, winning again. Um, I'm welcoming Ms. Fabry. I can't wait to work with you. We've had a couple discussions and you seem like you genuinely have the best interest of everybody at heart. Um. I think we have to all remember communication, collaboration, and transparency among ourselves, along with the administration. There's a lot of work ahead. Um, and we need to be able to work together. Ms. Spinelli, congratulations on becoming president, and I look forward to working with you. Um, again, I look forward to working with everybody. Uh, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. First off, I want to congratulate Mr. Silva and Ms. Acosta, who have became good friends of mine since I've come on the board, and I can't wait to meet and work with, um, Renee and also, you know, gain a, a strong friendship because that's what this board is about. It's a great group of people. We work together and we are our own little family. Um, thank you to my fellow board members who are supporting me in this president role. This is about all of us. It's not about one or two people here. We are a team, and I look forward to building, um, a better team and a great team in twenty-twenty-two. Uh, we definitely have some challenges ahead of us, and we're gonna hit the ground running, uh, starting tomorrow. You'll be getting some emails from me on some plans that I have for committees and community events and some exciting stuff that I've been thinking about for the past five years since I got on the board. So thank you for your support tonight, and I look forward to working with each and every one of you. My door is always open. Please contact me for any questions or concerns, um, that you might have, because this is about the team. Thank you. So I think that concludes.
Ms. Spinelli. We give the superintendent an opportunity to.
I always forget about him.
Madam President, please don't forget about me. Congratulations, uh, Ms. Spinelli, Ms. Cottisbody, uh, with your election tonight, president and vice president. Also, just like to, uh, welcome back Mr. Silva. Ms. Costa, and also welcome to the team, Ms. Fabry. Uh, for the work that we're about to do. It's going to be challenging. There will be times when we disagree, and it's okay. We will work together because with many different perspectives and input, we get to a better product. Uh, but we are in challenging times, uh, in our school district as we move through uh, the reopening of our school district and making sure our students are safe and our staff are safe as we return to in-person instruction. Uh, this Friday, just want to remind everyone, there's another snow event, so just be on the lookout, uh, for some possible announcements as we get closer to the weekend. Uh, we don't want any more snow, but it looks like it's gonna be a snowy winter, so let's just stand by and see what happens next. And thank you and have a great evening.
Thank you. At this time, the meeting is adjourned.
Motion. So.
Second. I think you can say all in favor, Meg, and I.
All in favor.
Aye, aye.
Aye. Good night, everyone.